Just before we get started, I just want to double check that Mr. Fortune is on.
I am, Madam Chair, but as of last Tuesday, we had that problem as well with the video.
Okay, excellent. Good evening. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeals Subcommittee Hearing for June 16, 2020 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until June 15, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure that this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in this hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the ambassador sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself. So again, if you're connected by telephone, press star nine to raise and lower your hand, and star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their names, add address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the ambassador will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. So just to ensure that we have Mark Fortune, Secretary, and Eric Robinson. Erica, you on?
I am on.
I am on as well.
Excellent. So before we proceed, the next subcommittee hearing is on June 21st. Unless there are changes in the regulations or in the law, that meeting will be held in person or maybe as a hybrid at 10:10 Mass Ave. So just please keep that in mind that the meeting of the 21st will be either in person or a hybrid at 10:10 Mass Ave. And I think we're all thinking go cells tonight, right? So, Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, hopefully cells can do it tonight. We'll see.
We'll see.
I don't feel too good, though, honestly. I'm going to call the hearing for five o'clock. Do we have any deferrals or withdrawals at five o'clock?
Forty-seven, forty-eight, Snow Hill, Mr. Secretary.
Thanks, Mr. Echol. For the record, calling BOA 1283294, forty-seven to forty-eight, Snow Hill Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Matt Echol with Treggo in Tuscana with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking a deferral this evening. We did appear before the subcommittee a few months ago and requested a deferral, and since then, we've met with the Butters as well as the community group and have made changes accordingly. We would like an opportunity to share those changes with the groups. I would request, if possible, based upon the group's schedules throughout the summer, September date, if the board sees fit to grant this deferral.
And we are likely looking at a full board meeting. So may I have a motion for deferral and then a date for a full board meeting?
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
I'll second Eric.
I too am in support, so you're all set on that, and may we have a September date, please?
Yeah, we can do September 27th.
Okay.
At eleven thirty.
Sorry, at nine thirty, sorry.
At eleven thirty, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the five o'clock case? Hearing none, I'll call the first case, calling BOA 1276140, 61 Montmorency Avenue. This is a converted and attached garage into a bedroom. Violation is Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR, and Article 53, Section 56, off street parking and loading. Name an address for the record, please.
That's me. My name is Jordan Matthews, Jordan Abigael Matthews. We live at 61 Montmorency Avenue. We have five kids. Our house is currently 1,200 square feet. And we were liking to add one more room converting our garage to a room, which would add about 320 square feet to the house. I'm making it 1,500 square feet. I do, let me show my screen here. It's okay if I share my screen?
No, I think that you just tell us which plan Mr. Ambassador needs to go to or we need to go to?
Yes, so that's the current layout there. If you go down a little bit, you can see the garage on the left would be making that into a room.
And tell us how you're parking. I'm assuming you're parking in the garage, but that may be a false assumption. Tell us about your parking situation, then.
We have a driveway that fits a full-size car on itself.
And you have one vehicle?
We have two vehicles.
Okay, so you will maintain the parking on the driveway. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. I think the scope seems pretty straightforward, however, I guess there's no elevations or information on the because obviously it becomes a bedroom. You need to add windows. I assume you're getting rid of the garage door. So we don't have any of that information, but I assume that's the plan in terms of making this accessible from a standpoint of life safety. Is what, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, I do. I do have some, I did make some elevation plans. I do have my screen if I'm able to share that.
Yeah, you can't, you can't share a hearing. Can you just, you can explain it to me, I think, just to make sure we're all on the same page?
Yeah, yeah, so we'd be having a getting rid of the garage door, overhead garage door, taking that out and then adding a walk-in door, entrance door, and then a window next to it.
Okay, so similar to the house to your left has a very similar condition. It looks like it has a door with a window. Okay.
Yes, yeah, exactly like that.
Madam Chair, my only other question, which I don't want to sully this a little bit, but I mean, this is technically front yard parking. Is that something that, because that is the, if we take away the driveway, is that applicable or not applicable?
Mr. Robinson, Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken. I don't think Mr. D'Amico was on tonight, but I do have his comments for the record.
Yep.
Regarding 61 Montmorency Ave, close the existing curb cut since it will not be used anymore. This will create an additional parking space as well. He doesn't mention anything about front yard parking.
Okay, I mean, I guess the toss-up for us is whether it's a child or a car. You know? So, and for 1,200 square foot house, do you have any occupancy in the basement?
We have five kids. So we have a kid staying in the basement right now.
You have a kid in a basement?
Yes.
And will that kid be moving up into the transformed garage?
Yes, two kids would, they'll be, two kids will share that room, so.
And so then, when this is said and done, there'll be no bedrooms in the basement?
Well, the base, the garage is the basement because the way that the house sits, it's sort of on a sloping side, right? And so it's kind of a, so I was wondering the same thing because there is a bedroom shown. I don't know what the egress is, but I think that's not really, I guess, under our purview, but I think we can ensure that there's no building code relief for this if we proceed forward with it in terms of ensuring there's egress for any bedrooms down there.
Okay, so is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office, like, deferred judgment to the board. Background information on the community process, the applicant met with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council on April of 2022. Council voted in support thirteen and support zero in opposition. Our office also held in a Butters meeting on March 3rd where Butters were also present and in support of the project. That we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, here we do have that letter that the Mayor's Office spoke of.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I do have one raised hand. I'll go to Sal. Are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, can you hear me?
Yep, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Salvatore Lamatina. I live at 76 Montmorency Avenue, directly across the street from the Matthew family. I just want to just mention that the whole neighborhood supports this addition bedroom in the garage. They have five beautiful children. Finally, we have some children in our neighborhood. They're adding life to our neighborhood, and whatever we could do to help them out, let's do it. Thank you so much.
And Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. I do think since we don't have the elevations, we should put a proviso, BPDA design proviso, as well as there are no building code relief associated with this approval for the lower-level bedrooms.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1321373131 West Newton Street. This is to install a cantilevered steel deck at power level and install a roof deck. The violation is Article 64, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Moran? If you want. I know Mr. Moran was on earlier.
Yeah, I did see.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go on, we can hear you.
I'm sorry. John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services with the mailing address of 130 Beach Road, Orleans, Mass. Madam Chair, this is the request for a cantilevered deck at the power level, which would project six feet into the rear yard. The violation noted on the refusal letter was Article 64, Section 9, without specifying a subsection. Customarily, that would require a conditional use permit. The violation does state the rear yard is insufficient because of the projection of the six-foot deck. However, under the shallow lot exception, Section 6437, lots less than 100 feet reduce six inches for each foot less than 100 feet. This lot is 72 feet. So the minimum requirement is 10 feet, so the lot is not insufficient, but it does require a conditional use permit.
And tell us about the roof deck.
The roof deck is a matter of right. It's, this is a single-family townhouse. No zoning relief is required for the roof deck. It complies with all dimensional setbacks.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, and it is bracket mounted, so no questions from me.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Chrisoli from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held in a Butters meeting on May 3rd where no opposition was shown by the Butters, and our office would like to defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1319033313 West Fourth Street. This is to construct a deck at the second floor, the rear. Violation is Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Pete VanderWiel. I'd be the builder of record if this would get approved. I live in 29 Inch Water Road in Hull.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Okay, on the drawing that we're looking at, the existing footprint of the building, there's the front of the building, and then you can see in the back of the building, there's there's an L addition that was put on, you know, decades ago, a two-story L is that back little piece, and then where it says the proposed deck, there's currently a patio on the ground floor there that's adjacent to that driveway for the property. And we would just be proposing that deck.
And it's not, it's not a second means of egress, it's a recreational deck?
Correct. It would be off the second floor.
Got it.
So we'd build it up, we'd build it up over the existing up over the existing patio that's underneath, adjacent to the driveway.
And this is a two-family dwelling?
Correct.
And its owner occupied?
Correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are, you see what you get. So no issue on the proposal. I reviewed it on live. I think it's fine. It's very simple. But the BPDA would like to see proviso since there's no elevations of the deck, so no other questions for me.
Got it. Hold on.
I do.
Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Going through the subcommittee process, the applicant circulated flyers to Butters. Our office does not have anything on file, any registered concerns from the neighbors. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 129512771 Peter Parley Road. This is demolition of an existing red deck and construction of a new red deck in its place. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Tom Malone of 16R St. John's Street in Jamaica Plain. I'm representing Chris Antonowicz of 71 Peter Parley Road, which is where the project is taking place. It's an owner-occupied two-family house, and we're tearing down the rear deck and hoping to build a new one in its place. The reason being, there's some rot and damage, so it's becoming a safety issue. And currently, there's an intermediate landing that takes out about half of the backyard. That's in the way. It's about eight feet off the rear lot line. And so what we're asking, or the violation that we have is rear yard insufficient. So we're actually moving the stairs closer to the house, and we're going to be in less violation than we currently are. We're asking for 17.7 feet off the rear lot line, and I think 20 was required. And that'll, the actual deck itself will be the same distance off the house that it is now, which is eight foot four inches. And this is the second means of egress for the house.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. It's an improvement, so no questions from me.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Background information on the community process, our office facilitated a meeting on March 2nd where the applicant received the unanimous support from residents in attendance. They also, the applicant went on to the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Subcommittee, which recommended approval to proceed in seeking zoning variance. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 128352157 Grantian Way. This is a finished basement, built perimeter walls and petition walls. Build a full bathroom. There is, there will be a basement extension of living space for unit one. Violation is Article 65, Section 1, excessive FAR, sorry, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
I, Balbona Martini, 57, Grantian Way in Dorchester.
And is this a one or a two-family dwelling?
It's, this is a two-family.
And is it owner occupied?
It's currently under construction, but it will be owner occupied.
Okay, and who do you expect to live in there?
Myself.
Okay, so tell us about what you're proposing to do with the basement?
Yep, so we would like to add some extra living space, a couple of rooms, which could be used as office or storage or whatever, a laundry room and a bathroom, most importantly, and some, you know, extra living area for that first-floor apartment. There is an existing door there, and the windows are just existing the way they are right now. And the stairs is also part of the existing house.
And you are the owner of record on this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so it will, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height in that basement?
It's seven feet.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, we have the plans. I don't have a question plans. We don't have any real information on the height or the grade or the slope. Tried to go by and take a look, and it's a little hard, but the I, you know, as long as these aren't bedrooms in the basement, I think it's fine if it's an extension of the living space, which it is called out. So I think if we proceed forward, I think this should have a proviso for ensure there's no bedrooms down here because there just doesn't look like there's enough windows for egress.
May I ask the applicant, is this connected to the first-floor unit?
Yes.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on February 1st. Butters were generally in support of the proposal. They were excited that the applicant was seeking to expand the home for their family. However, the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association Planning Committee voted to oppose this project, expressing doubts over the need for two playrooms. At this time, our office defers to the board. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
No, Madam Chair, Secretary, here we do have one letter of support from Frank Baker's office.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the proviso that there's no bedrooms in the basement.
Mr. Robinson, do you think, I mean, the BPDA recommends design review so that they can, in fact, certify?
Verify that. That's great. Yep, I will add proviso for BPDA to review that. Thank you.
And with no, but we will make a point of saying no bedrooms in the basement?
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104456186 Fairlon Street. This is the demo front and rear porches, build a new front porch on the second-floor addition and build a new rear addition and porch, renovate the second floor. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 65, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Alberto Leon, and I'm the architect for the project.
So tell us, is this a one-family or a two-family?
It's a two-family.
It's a two-family, and is it owner occupied?
It is. The owner lives on the second floor.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed?
So the owner would like to replace the front and back porches and also extend the habitable space from the second floor into the attic. That still takes us over the FAR. The, my client is an elderly couple, and their niece is going to move in with them upstairs in the attic. So these plans show the additional stair that we need to get to the attic and to the second floor.
Okay, so what I need clarification on, it says build new rear addition.
Yes, so the addition, the addition in the back consists of a stair. Right now, it's an existing porch, and the original plan was to provide a stair that was better for my client to be able to go up and down because the existing stairs are very dangerous.
Okay.
And then that stair takes us up to the attic now.
And the building would continue to stay as a two-family?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the proposed size of that second unit?
The proposed size is, I'm sorry. We're approximately doing 800 square feet or so, 800, 900 square feet.
So it says the second unit's going to be about 2,500 square feet, I think is what it.
Total correct.
And the first unit is 1,500, roughly.
Correct.
This is on the front page, so, yep.
Okay, and then is that first unit, is there a possibility of making it handicapped accessible?
It's, it's a very tight site and the topology is.
I'm only asking because you presented that they're elderly and they're having their niece move in just to have, keep an eye on them, so that's the reason I was asking.
I think that there's a possibility to try to make, you know, like a little ramp or something in the back. That's where I would do it. The only thing is that we have a garage in the back, also an accessory building, so, but I can bring it up to my client.
And because, I mean, the only reason I ask is that, you know, in the design of your front porch, you know, do you need to account for that in our design?
So the stair that we're going to be providing will meet code, so it'll be definitely an improvement of what used to be there, which did not meet current code. And so the same thing we're doing with the stairs in the back, we're now providing something that meets code, which is also, you know, meets certain accessibility requirements.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think that, you know, the addition is toward the back, but there is an existing porch that they're removing, and it's only about a foot further than that, so I think it's minimal impact on that. And the plans look pretty straightforward in terms of a proposed layout. No questions.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Background information on the community process, the applicant met twice with the Dorchester United Neighborhood Association, also known as DUN, on July of 2021 and April of 2022. Our office also held in a Butters meeting on March 3rd. We feel that at this time, residents have not expressed any concerns, any lingering concerns since going through the community process. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to approve with uh, BPDA Design Review.
Mr. Fortune?
Technical difficulties here, I'm good. I'm sorry, uh, I would second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one three 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 zero five one twenty Deal Street. This is a renovation of existing single-family residence. A new dome will be added at the rear along the new habitable area and the third floor and basement. A new rear dome will create a three-story and a two-and-a-half-story zone. The front porch will be also rebuilt. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the building is excessive in stories. And Article sixty-seven, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Michael Davis, uh, twelve Bangor Road, West Roxbury, Massachusetts.
So first, tell us, is this a one family or a two family?
It's a current one family, ma'am.
And is it owner, is it owner occupied?
Uh, it is not. It was, uh, the house was abandoned uh, in severe disrepair. Um, so, you know, borderline condemned, condemned when uh, we took ownership. So, um, currently, uh, square footage of record was thirteen hundred and twelve square feet. Looking to add a third bedroom at the third level.
Let's just defer this to the full board, okay? Since it looks like it's an investor property.
I'll make a motion to defer to the full board.
Second?
I, I'll second that motion.
I two him in support, the date?
Madam Chair, we can get them in. I think we can squeeze them in next week if you'd like.
Uh, that's fine, uh, but, well, I know that everything is not starting until ten thirty-five. So what?
You're right, Madam Chair. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so let's move it, so.
Well, the, the next day we can do is July twenty-sixth, eleven thirty.
July twenty, we'll see you July twenty-sixth at eleven thirty, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Two seconds, Madam Chair. Housekeeping here. Calling your next case. Calling BOA one two nine six two seven seven twelve Catomet Street. This is a new second-story addition. Violation Article fifty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient, and Article fifty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is David Rand. I live at twelve Catomet Street, Jamaica Plain. I'm the homeowner.
David, has this property been before this board before? Has this address?
Sorry, I didn't hear that, that last sentence you said.
This address been before this board before?
Not before this board, but it's been through several neighborhood.
Okay.
Uh, meetings.
And so, is this a one or a two family, and is it owner occupied?
It's a single family, and it's owner occupied.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
Uh, we have an existing uh, one-story uh, room in the back of the house. We're just proposing to put a, a second floor over that existing first floor to expand out the uh, the master bedroom. We have a small, small, very small closet areas and, and bathrooms, and we're just looking to expand that a little bit with, with that additional space over that existing first floor area.
Got it, okay. How are the plans, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, uh, very straightforward and simple, no questions on the proposal.
Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. And the applicant went through an extensive uh, community process, refining support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. I have no letters in opposition to this proposal at this time. The Mayor's Office like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one three zero seven four three two eleven Parkside Drive. This is to build a second-floor addition, expansion of the garage, renovation of the kitchen, expansion of living space in the basement. The violation is Article fifty-five, section nine, quarter ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient, and Article fifty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Is anyone on the call for this case? Can you raise your hand, please?
Uh, Mr. Alver, Alvero was on earlier.
Hi, Roya. I see your hand is raised. I sent a request to unmute you. Are you here for this case? Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, yes, this is Roya Castravi Far. I'm uh, the owner. Uh, eleven Parkside Drive is a single-family home, and it's owner occupied.
So tell us what you're proposing to do.
So what we're proposing to do is that currently we have a one-car garage, and uh, it, uh, we are having problem getting the car in and out, especially in the winter, and also because the house across the street from us blocks our driveway, which is a single uh, car driveway. We're proposing to extend that uh, uh, garage by six point seven, seven feet, and making it two-car garage, the entrance from the front instead of from the side. The garage currently is one-story. The other part of the house is two-story. We plan to build a second floor um, above the garage room as a master bedroom. And we also plan to uh, make a, a room in the basement for an office, for the hybrid work for, uh, because both my husband and I have to partly, or at sometimes all the time, uh, do hybrid work.
Okay, so, um, some, so how many bedrooms will be in this house? Three bedrooms?
Uh, currently, there are three bedrooms. One is used as an office, so it will be um, four bedrooms, but one is used as an office.
Okay, um, um, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans um, with the um, with the access? Do you have full drawings about how the access to the garage will work?
No, so I don't have a site plan. Um, that's the one, only one question I have. I think the proposed addition is, is fine. I don't have any problems with the proposal and the basement. It looks like it's a bonus room or an office, so we can just clarify that. But I don't have an, a, a site plan, because I'm not sure I understand. Are you going to?
Plot plan was provided. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, with the driveway acc, are you changing the driveway access? Because right now, your driveway comes in on the right-hand side, obviously, and you going to the garage. How are you going to change the driveway to be able to access?
So this is a private road, and there is no curbing um.
Yep, I can see that, yep.
So basically, right now, uh, right now, I'm sorry, I'm trying to uh, get myself shown, but I can't see how I can uh, show myself. But uh, basically, right now, the driveway is from, we, the driveway is going in, and then uh, the garage entrance is on the side of the house. We're moving it to the front of the house, and all of the other houses on this, on our street have fa, uh, front-site entrance. So it's.
I agree, yep.
The same as all the other houses on the neighborhood.
So you have a big rock in your front yard, so you're gonna change your driveway access to come basically where the rock is?
We're moving that rock, yes. And we're gonna uh, basically put lawn in the place.
Where the driveway is.
Driveway is, yes.
Okay, I, I think.
There's going to be a walkway, because our gate opens uh, in the back, so we're gonna have like a walkway uh, going to the uh, gate. But that area is going, the, the, the current driveway is gonna become a lawn.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, I, I, I don't have that site plan, but I think we can put a proviso for the BPDA to review um, for the site plan and the access drive. I, I think it's probably makes sense, as long as the driveway becomes lawn, I think.
Uh, I'm sorry, isn't, isn't that the plot plan? I'm not sure.
Now, hold on, hold on. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. Background information, um, this went through an extensive community process, where they received support from Director Butters, uh, the J H A, and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council zoning, um, and with that, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Just, just so the proponent knows, we, I have an existing site plan, but it doesn't show the location of your new driveway.
Oh, okay. Okay, I can ask our uh, surveyor to add that. Thank you.
I have no raised hands. Sorry, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review for uh, the design, obviously, of the addition and also uh, the site plan.
I'll second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one three one 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 zero four one hundred Chesboro Road. This is to replace existing temporary carport with new car garage and connecting breezeway entrance to the basement. The violation, violation is Article fifty-six, section eight, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-six, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient, and Article fifty-six, section eight, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, the name is uh, Christopher Carrier, one hundred Chesboro Road, West Roxbury.
So please tell us what you're proposing to do.
Uh, so the home is um, it's myself owner occupied. Essentially, I have a temporary carport there uh, currently, and I'm looking to replace that with a garage and connect that with a breezeway to my uh, basement.
Okay, so what's the distance from your proposed garage to the side property line?
Uh, the distance from the proposed garage to the side property line, I believe, is um, within a, I think it's a, a foot? Foot and a half. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it's under, yeah, it's close. Um, but I do have, I do have actually, um, I don't wanna say approval, but uh, so the Butters are folks that actually uh, would be next to me. Uh, they already sent in Joanne and um, Rob, me, uh, a support uh, from them, as well as the, my other neighbors.
So the thing is, you know, we need to look at this as a to, a long-term, you know, a long-term issue. Is there, is there anything getting in your way of moving that garage a little closer to the house and leaving a little more side yard?
Uh, well, right now, the, the location of the garage itself, the corner of it, would already be abutting the corner of my house. So uh, we may be able to get it a couple of inches closer, but um, that, that's about it. We may be able to get to somewhere between nine and twelve inches uh, of separation. Uh, I do actually, like I said, have a, a fence between myself and the, the neighbors. And so, there's no um, you know, concern with us being able to work on either side of the property.
So I, I suppose you're planning it this way, because you already have the driveway?
Right, the driveway is there, and there's already an existing carport. It's kind of temporary. It's a metal structure with a covering. And um, it's quite, I don't wanna say unsightly, but it's not really a permanent structure, so I prefer to.
No.
Basically take it and replace it.
I'm glad you're coming in with something that, that looks like it um, you know, will, will add value to the community, but we just wanna make sure that it doesn't over-impact the neighborhood in some way. Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine. I, 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 I think I have a similar concern, but it, it does, it's, it's, it's tight. There, there's no doubt, and it's right on the edge, but I think if, if we can ask the proponent to try to pull it off as much as possible, um, maybe the BPDA can help uh, look at that and just make sure dimensionally it's, it's so, so tight as it can be, so to the house.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. One hundred Chesboro went through a community process, which included meeting with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, where the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council voted six-zero in support of the project. We also received that letter of support from ninety-six Chesboro, the Director Butter, in support of the project. At this time, we defer decision to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have tho, those letters plus one other support letter, so three total.
Okay, and I, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve with uh, BPDA Design Review, um, specifically seeing if they can increase any, any bit on the side yard and for design review.
I'll second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one three one six four two four thirty-six Glen Haven Road. This is to remove the existing mudroom and garage and construct a new addition in the existing footprint of the building. Remodel the exi, existing bathroom on the second floor and a sixteen-by-sixteen deck back of the house. Replace the bulkhead doors. The violation is Article fifty-six, section eight, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Laura Goon and Dominic Fuji. We're the homeowners of thirty-six Glen Haven Road. Um, we, we are a family of, we were a family of three. Um, and in October of twenty twenty, we took in our niece. So uh, we have two bedrooms, one bath, and four people are sharing the space of um, less than twelve hundred square feet. So we're hoping to uh, take down the existing garage and um, breezeway, and then build within that same footprint, a bonus room, and on top of the bonus room, another uh, bedroom and bathroom, um, to re, replace what we're taking down.
Okay, um, uh, so what's the total square footage of the addition?
Actually, um, we have.
Can you help Eric?
Yeah, I'm trying to do the math. It's about three, three hundred and fifty per floor, roughly.
So it's six, about seven hundred square.
About six or seven hundred square feet. But, um, that's very, sorry, that's very quick, but that's around that.
Okay, no, no problem. And how, uh, can you tell, uh, Mr. Robinson, how the driveway and access to the garage is going to work?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, you know, a similar, a little bit of a similar condition, um, you know, the new extension basically on top of the, or right on the, the property line. Um, there is uh, obviously, the existing garage is there, so this one has at least a structure, an existing structure, but they're extending it. But um, so, I mean, the, the, the garage, um, so the garage is going away. There will no be, no longer be the garage. It's gonna be living space. So are, it doesn't look like, is the driveway gonna go away as well? Um, because it doesn't look like you'll have enough room remaining to park without being in the sidewalk.
We don't, we don't use the, uh, the driveway to park our car, because there isn't enough room, so we just park on the street.
The driveway is on Keystone, correct, ma'am?
Yes, yeah. I mean, I wonder, you know, I wonder if this is the case where we should have the driveway closed up then, um.
Yeah, I think that's.
Street will be closed, and then there'll be an additional site, spot, you know?
Yep, that, that sounds like what, uh, where the BPDA might be heading in their, in that, in their recommendation.
Yep.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, there were two community meetings held for this project, one on April twenty-seventh with the Austin, Office of Neighborhood Services, and another with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on May twenty-fourth. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council voted seven-zero in support of the project, and we have received no letters of opposition. At this time, we defer decision to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have that one letter of support from the West Roxbury Council.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, I, I'll make a motion, but I just, uh, can I just ask the proponent, you, you do have the support of six Keystone for this project?
I'm sorry, what do you mean by you have the support?
Of your abutting neighbor that you're building the, on their property line? Do, are they in support of this proposal?
Yes.
I believe so. They, they didn't come to um. Yeah, any meetings.
They were notified.
Have you talked to them about the proposal?
Um, no.
Okay.
Um, sorry, Mr. Robinson, is that because of the rear yard insufficiency?
Well, it's the side yard, because it, they're just, the addition is going up right on the side yard, is my question. So I, I just wanted to see if they had, reached out to their neighbor.
So maybe we should uh, ask the um, BPDA again, to see if there's a possibility of increasing that side yard.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review regarding the sidebar yard, as well as, I think, the proviso to remove the curb cut and repair the sidewalk in terms of to close that off.
I'll second that motion.
I tune in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one three two eight three three seven fifty-one Greta Road. This is a renovation update, a side addition over the garage in an existing single-family home. The violation is Article fifty six, section thirty-nine, off street parking and loading, and Article fifty six, section eight, insufficient side yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulginie, ten fourth Road in Braintree. Here on behalf of the homeowner, Matt and Catherine O'Malley. So the zoning is one at six thousand, the lots is four thousand seven hundred and eighteen square feet. The existing home is eleven hundred and twenty-eight square feet. The proposal is to update and add a second level over the existing garage. This will be adding approximately four hundred and sixty-seven square feet to the home. So currently, you know, walking through the renovation, current first floor is a kitchen, dining room, living room, and a half bathroom. Proposed will be a kitchen where the garage is located, den, dining room, living room, half bath, and breakfast nook with a renovated side deck. Currently, there's three beds and a full bath. Proposed is three bedrooms and a new full bath connected to a bedroom, creating a master bedroom on the second level.
So, Mr. Pulginie, does that mean then that there is, where is, where is parking going to be located then if the extension of the kitchen is going to occupy that garage space?
It'll be exactly where it is now, Madam Chair. The garage is inaccessible. This, that violation for parking in front of the garage is not valid in the sense that this was, this, the zoning, this building predated the zoning change of this neighborhood.
Okay, so basically, this garage was never used as a garage. It was used as, for other reasons, but parking was always in the front yard.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Do we have a site plan to see how this is going to work?
Madam Chair, just so, if you, Mr. D'Amico has spoken on this one, put it into the record, please.
Please, go ahead.
Regarding fifty-one Greta Road, front yard, it is front yard parking, and BTD is opposed.
Okay, thank you. So let's just see how this is supposed to work.
And Madam Chair, if I, if I could just address that quickly, it is not a violation. We went back and forth with the ZB, with ISD, not the zoning board of appeal. Again, it predated the zoning change for front yard parking. The whole neighborhood has front yard parking, and it's always been front yard parking in front of the garage.
Okay, who's running the screen? Yes, so, so if I'm looking at this plan, there's going to be, I mean, I, I, just correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here. There is going to be a landing with a walkway directly to the landing and a driveway that is exactly ten foot six, extending from where that existing garage is.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
There is not going to be any more paving, asphalting of that front yard.
None, none whatsoever.
Okay, okay, got it. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No question on the proposal, and, you know, I, it is consistent. There's front yard parking. I can tell the garages are undersized in that, in this old street. So no questions on that for me.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm looking at it as well on Google Maps, so it is, and I know the area very well.
Excellent. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on May twenty-fourth, receiving unanimous vote in support. Our office has no letters of opposition, and one letter of support from an abutter. With that, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have those letters, the mayor's office speaking up.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
I tune in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your night. Enjoy the Celtics.
Calling, calling a next case, calling BOA one three zero five eight six two two hundred Temple Street. This is to construct a master suite, second floor addition with master bath. Above, remodel the kitchen and dining room, a new roof deck on the second floor addition. And there's no change to the footprint of the building on the first floor. The house will remain a single family. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Derek Rubenoff from Derek Rubenoff Architects, and our business address is eighty-two eighty-four Spring Street in West Roxbury. And hello to Madam Chair and the board committee. We appreciate your time. We represent the owners, Aaron and John Pels. I think Aaron is on the, on the line with us here as well. They moved in a couple of years ago, and they have a growing family. And they're looking to add some more bedroom space. And so the project, the proposed project is to build on top of an existing one-story addition at the back, build a second floor on top of that. There's a little bit of a new footprint on the left side, but that new footprint does not have any issues with zoning. The issue that we have with zoning is the, on the right there, the side yard is a little bit short. We're not.
So, Mr. Rubenoff, a couple of questions. What's the square foot of the lot?
The square footage of the lots is seven thousand five hundred and ninety-three square feet.
Okay, and what is the side yard required and what's the side yard being proposed?
The required side yard is ten feet, and the proposed side yard, which is existing, is six foot two and three quarters. And so there's an existing rear addition that has that six foot two and three quarter side setback. And our proposal is to build on top of that, so we would be extending that existing nonconformity, but not making it any worse.
So it's extending it on the second floor, and then you have a deck next to that or on top of that?
Yeah, there's a, there's a proposed roof deck on top of that, right, on, on top of that, because there's an existing, there's an existing third floor space that would have access to a proposed roof deck in the back. That roof deck would also be extending the nonconformity.
So, and there is no way of pulling back that roof deck and pulling back that addition? So there's not a straight long wall that's presented to the abutter next door?
Well, the, the addition, the existing addition already does jog, so if we go back to the previous plan, right, you can see the, at the top right, so the front, at the front of the house is at the bottom of the page. So you can see that the addition in the back already does jog back a little bit from the main part of the house. So it already is not a, one that's strong, one long straight wall. So it would look, you know, strange if we look at the, the last page where the 3D views are. It would look strange not to have, or to have that volume jog over in elevation.
And so what's the distance between this building and the building on the abutting property?
The abutting property has a driveway between, and I, I can't give you an exact figure, but I'm looking at it on my screen right now. And I'm going to estimate that we've got about twenty feet between the two buildings.
Okay.
Quite a bit. And I did just get a, a text of, of support from the abutting neighbor who has the side yard right up against the side yard issue, right up against them, and I can forward that to the board.
Yes, please do so. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, are good, you know, no real questions on the proposal. I think you, you talked about the issue, the only issue that I think is really there in terms of what's to be proposed, so no further questions.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process, the applicant presented to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on April nineteenth and received unanimous support. We have received no letters of opposition and one letter of support from a director of butter. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary, we have those letters that the mayor's office spoke of.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
I tune in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one two eight five three zero nine one fifty-seven Theodore Parker Road. This is a conversion and extension of an existing attic into living space. There'll be a new rear shed dormer and three single dormers at the front. This is an existing first floor kitchen will be rebuilt and expanded. But the house will remain a single family. The violation is Article fifty six, section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty six, section eight, insufficient side yard. Article fifty six, section eight, the maximum allowed number of stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Dave Giordano, and I live at one fifty-seven Theodore Parker Road. I'm the owner. Along with my wife, Julie Muse Fisher. She's, she's on the line as well.
Please tell us what you're proposing to do.
Sure, we, we currently have a walk-up attic. We, we've lived here since two thousand and eight, and now we have three kids. We have a three-bedroom house. So we have our twin daughters who are eleven that share a bedroom, and our son is in another bedroom. So we're trying to create some space on the third floor. I have a home office on the first floor and a side room on the first floor, so on the third floor, trying to create another bedroom and a more living space and a, an office space for me.
So I'm sorry, the third floor would hold another bedroom? How many bedrooms ultimately in this house?
Four.
Okay, four bedroom. Okay, let's see, tell us about, so you would just be going up, but you would be changing from a two and a half story to a three story essentially. So tell us about that dormer. How many square feet do you anticipate in that, in that dormer?
I don't have the square footage number.
Madam Chairperson, I'm, I'm, just Tim Shannon nine Wall Street. I can answer this.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, the existing roof now is a hip roof, so we're just going to convert it to a, a straight-up gable roof. And there'll be three hundred and twelve additional gross square feet up on that new third floor. So it, it, you know, it's officially not a two and a half story building. Once you put that dormer on, it's a three-story building. That's the zoning problem. And we'll have seven foot of ceiling height area, you know, co-legal, it has to be fifty percent of the floor area, so we'll have three hundred and twelve square feet.
And what's the existing square feet of the building?
I have that. It's fifteen, seventeen. I've got seven seventeen gross.
Seventeen seventeen?
Yep.
That was a good year. Okay. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think, you know, I do think the neighborhood seems to be more of a two and a half story neighborhood, but I think the proposed addition is fairly straightforward. I think that I don't really have too many questions about it.
Okay.
Other than that, thank you.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. The applicant went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on April nineteenth and also received unanimous support. At this time, we've received no letters of opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have the, what is the mayor of office spoke of.
On the menu, I have, oh, I do have a raised hand here. Second, Joe, are you here to give testimony on this proposal? I sent it to you.
My name is Joe Kelly. My wife, Linda Kelly, one fifty-three Theodore Parker. We're immediate abudders. They are a wonderful family, a great addition to the neighborhood. We support it all heartedly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands.
Mr. Robinson, the BPDA is recommending design review and to work with staff to refine the size and location of the proposed dormer.
Yep.
Sounds reasonable?
Yes, it does. I'm on the same page. So, yep, I'll make that recommendation.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve with BPA design review, looking at the, the size of the addition in terms of its relationship to the edges.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
I tune in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one two six eight four one three sixty-nine Vincent Road. We suggest construct a fourteen-by-eight deck and a ten-by-sixteen shed. The violation is Article fifty six, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, this is David Walsh, I'm the architect for the project, and.
So please go ahead, tell us, I put your address on the record, and tell us what's being proposed.
Again, I'm David Walsh, the architect of the project.
David, what is your address?
At seventy-seven Winthrop Avenue in Reading, Massachusetts, oh, one eight six seven.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
Yes. Mark and Tammy bought the property, the single-family home a few years back, and it was an existing shed in the backyard, which was torn down. They want to replace that shed with a Reed's Ferry shed in about the approximate same location as the earlier shed. It's about sixteen.
Sorry, how long has that shed been down?
I'm sorry, say again?
How long has that shed been down?
About a year.
Hmm, okay. Okay, so, so this is what is being proposed? So they're.
We're proposing the ten-by-sixteen Reed's Ferry shed.
So it looks like it's bang smack in the backyard. Is that, am I reading this right? Sorry?
I haven't seen this before. The, the shed location we have proposed is basically where the SD is labeled. So you have about a sixteen-foot setback from the rear fence.
No, that, we're not, not the SD. We don't want it. It's where the ten-by-sixteen shed is. Sorry, this is Mark, the owner.
So this is the proposed location and eighteen feet from the.
What you, the SD, what you see there is what was taken down.
Can I just have one person represent what's going on? So it looks like your violation is the rear yard is insufficient. So with the location that's up on the screen, what's the distance between the back of the shed and the property line? What's the distance that's proposed by this and what is required by zoning?
The back of the shed is eighteen feet from the rear property line. And it's like thirty-two feet from the side.
And what's required?
I believe it's thirty feet from the rear and fifteen, I believe, from this, from the side.
And what's the square foot of this lot?
It's of the lot or the shed.
Of the lot.
The lot is six thousand five hundred and ninety-nine square feet.
Okay. Who's running the screen today? Can you bring it down a little bit so we can see the entire lot? Okay, I see. So you're, so wait, so it says that your rear.
Twenty-eight feet is what it.
Twenty-eight feet, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, and I think the rear is thirty, so it's. Close.
A couple of feet short. And, and what's the, what's, how high is this shed?
It's one story.
It's a, it's a one-story shed? It's not less than one story?
It's just, it's about twelve feet at, at the ridge.
And there's no occupancy for this shed? I don't think so, but let me just.
Be on the slab.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. There's more information on the deck, and, yeah, I think there's, it's pretty straightforward. I don't see an issue.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. The applicant met with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on April nineteenth and received unanimous support. Our office is unaware of any concerns on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have that letter that the mayor's office spoke of.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Although, I tune in support, so you're all. All the, I too am in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the last case of the night, calling B O A one two five eight one one eight eighty-two Presentation Road. This is adding one bedroom, one bathroom and a storage closet in an attic of an existing house. The violation is Article fifty-one, section nine, the floor ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Kendra and David Rowe. We are the owner occupied homeowners, eighty-two Presentation Road, Brighton, zero two one three five. It is a single family.
So what's the square foot of the lot?
It's four thousand square feet.
Four thousand square foot lot and what's the zoning?
It's a one F five, I believe.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
Yes, ma'am. The, the existing structure was built a few years ago, so it's a new construction. We were in front of this board approximately ten years ago to get approval on the existing structure. At the time, the attic was afterthought, or else we would have tried to include it at that time. Now, what we'd like to do is expand into the attic space to put the bedroom and bathroom and storage, as explained here.
And it is owner occupied? And so how many bedrooms will you end up with?
Yes, ma'am. So it's currently three bedrooms and this will make it a fourth bedroom.
Okay. Okay, and let's see, so you're. Okay, so basically, it's becoming a three-story building. Okay, and this is through, you're doing this through, are you adding a dormer? How are you doing this?
The, the dormers are already existing as our two end windows, so there isn't actual construction per se on the attic. Roof area, it's already existing. So what we're proposing is just to build out the existing space.
And what's the floor to ceiling height in that space?
Oh goodness, um. I think by the, when it's built, sorry, my, my plans don't go in that direction. It's over eight feet, I know that.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. There, it does look like everything, there's no exterior changes. This is all internal to the, the structure. So I assume everything is decoded in terms of height and clearance to get up there. I see that there, so it's, they're in a dormer. So no, no questions about the proposal in terms of the plans.
Thank you. May I ask the applicant, what's the, the square foot of the current house?
It is three thousand square feet, the first and second floors.
Okay, card. And you want to add this additional a thousand square feet approximately?
Correct.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. And this time, I'd like to defer judgment to the board. The applicant circulated flyers to all abutters within three hundred feet. No concerns were raised with our office. They also went on to the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, received their full support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
And may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the meeting for today is now adjourned.
Thank you, good night.
See you guys.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, ten thirty, okay, ten thirty-five, okay, bye.
Bye.